Good evening. I'm Mayor Dean Brooke, and I'd like to welcome you to the December 1st, 2020 City Council Meeting, the regular council meeting in a virtual format. With that, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Counselor Batine?
Here.
Counselor Nosworthy?
Present.
Counselor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Pratam Baxter?
Here.
Mayor Brooke?
Here. Thank you so much, Fay. And with that, we'll move on to any identification of any actual or perceived conflicts of interest amongst councilors for any of the items that we have on our agenda this evening. Seeing none, we'll move on to public participation. Public participation, we welcome any member of our public to participate virtually in our city council meeting. You can participate by raising your hand on Zoom, and our moderator, Mitchell, will accept your invitation and invite you into our meeting. And you will have three minutes to talk on any particular topic that's not on the agenda this evening. If you are interested in talking about something that's on the agenda, we ask that you wait and participate during that public hearing. You will be given three minutes. We have a timer. If you can watch, our moderator will hold up a one-minute sign, and I might politely ask you to wrap up your comments at that time. If you're dialing in by phone, you just use the star six function. I believe that's right, Mitchell, star six, and that will also allow you to be acknowledged and entered into our virtual format this evening. So with that, I'd like to start our public participation this evening, just actually with a presentation that was intended to be by Leigh Anne Gilan of San Juan Basin Health Department. But many of you know, we have COVID Policy Group in the number, which we've been having since the onset of the COVID crisis. And that is educators, elected officials, healthcare officials, and city and county employees, city managers, county managers, et cetera, that have been establishing policy related to COVID. We'd like to talk a little bit this evening about the urgency that we are currently encountering, which is the hospitalization and the current crisis we're having relative to the medical community's capacity to handle our current situation. In La Plata County, to start with, we've had over 400 cases, 400 reported cases of COVID in the past week. That's more than a doubling over the past previous week. And as you might, in the first eight months, we were in the around 100 range. So we have had a significant increase over the past week, which is causing immediate concern relative to our hospital and our medical community's ability to respond to the current crisis. As you see on this slide, we have, this is statewide, I should say, these four slides that I'll show you are state hospitalization rates. And this is a 31% increase, right here over the last red bar on the right, is a 31% increase, just in one week statewide. And as I might reiterate, our caseload in La Plata County is 400 new cases since last Monday. We'll get a new report tomorrow, which will include those cases that are subsequent to the Thanksgiving weekend, and they are guaranteed not to present any better picture. So with the next slide, please, Mitchell. This is, again, statewide, but it provides a curve showing what transmission, the TC, that's the amount of transmission, and, excuse me, that's the amount of wearing masks and distancing. If we have 65% in that little beige line of wearing masks and social distancing, transmission compliance, then we can keep our curve on the current trajectory. And at that point, the highest rate of transmission is anticipated to be about January 15th, at which point, with vaccines, et cetera, we anticipate that the curve will drop. So the key for in our own community is to have very good masks and social distancing compliance throughout the next couple of weeks, so that we can achieve that light beige curve and not increase our capacity up over into the relative stratosphere here. And so this is just key to the concept, the basic fundamental concept of if we wear masks and if we social distance, we can beat this thing and have a peak around January 15th, 2021. Next slide, please.
Dean, was that a peak in hospital utilization?
That is, that's in transmission control, and that is, yeah, that is represented in ICU bed fulfillment. Thank you, Barbara. Essentially, that's our ability to...
Maybe Mitchell could go back to the previous slide, because there's a conflict there. It's this dotted line that goes across the center is at which point we reach ICU capacity on a statewide level. So at this point, if we can stay at a 65% transmission control rate or better, we will not reach ICU capacity. We'll be right at it. So this is another reason why it's incredibly important to have our transmission control, which, as you mentioned, mask-wearing, social distancing, hand washing, all the things we're trying to encourage everyone to do, to even do better at it over the next couple of weeks, so that we can keep that curve hopefully down more towards the green curve, which means that our health services are not overused in the ICU area, which then means that those of us who might need to use it for reasons other than COVID would be able to do so.
Thank you for that. And while we're looking at that, we can talk about hospitalization. Our local hospitals, Pagosa Springs Medical Center, as an example, has no ICU beds at all. So they have encountered difficulty in transferring any of their patients, typically to Mercy here or some hospital in the area, and have encountered the fact that Mercy is at capacity currently and has no ability to accept regional clients. So, and we have ability, there is a statewide program for hospitals like Mercy to transfer our patients in a surge to more, to other hospitals. Typically, Mercy would transfer to Grand Junction. All hospitals in Denver are also coming up against their maximum line and are considering, and are not opportunities for transfer of our patients to metro area. And similarly with Grand Junction, they are peaking similarly as we are right now. And so our ability to transfer people out of Durango is significantly impaired. The surge plans to address the increasing total availability of beds and increasing the number of beds available for higher levels of care, e.g., ICUs, really do not successfully address how we can increase staff, especially in multiple locations within the state. In other words, we're all in this together. The entire state is experiencing a shortage of medical staff capable of running ICU rooms, even if they were available. So it's not a matter of any more of available beds, although they're full. It's a matter of the staffing that would be able to, we see this on national TV, but it's happening, we can say, today in Durango, Colorado. We don't have available staff to, we soon are approaching not having available staff to adequately staff all the ICU beds that we currently have. And at least one-third of Colorado hospitals are reporting staff shortages this week. So we aren't able to import, as Mercy has historically been able to do, medical staff to fulfill those requirements. The State Emergency Operations Center reported over 50 hospitals placed orders with emergency management for additional staffing resources. That means everybody's having issues. And so what that means on a local basis is we don't have a lot of options. We have to be very, very careful. And so by transmission control, that's wearing masks and social distancing, it's that simple. We can help ourselves not put our medical community into a crisis. Next slide, please, Mitchell. Statewide, with the same transmission control elements, we see here, if we can elevate to 70% or 80% compliance with masks and distancing, then we can reduce deaths. Right now, in the state of Colorado, 2,800 people have died to date. It's projected that by the end of, let's see, this would take us out to December 31st, that if we can do 80% transmission control, we will limit the number of deaths throughout Colorado to 4,900. That's not a good statistic. If we're able to limit, enhance our social distancing and mask-wearing to 70% compliance throughout our community and the state, we will limit our number of deaths to 5,900. At the current rate of compliance, which we believe is around 65% transmission control, we will encounter 6,600 deaths in the state of Colorado. Currently, that's an increase from the 2,800 that have died to date. So we can triple the amount of deaths where we control the amount of deaths in our state if we just simply wear a mask. That's the basic fundamental picture illustrated here. Next slide, please. This is ICU bed capacity. And as Ken mentioned earlier, the idea, the optimal for any hospital is 80% threshold, giving us 20% capacity. The little yellow line is the ICU bed utilization to date. And you can see that in the past, just since November 15th, we've had this radical uptick in ICU bed utilization. And thus, the urgent request to just do basic social distancing and mask-wearing, so that we don't put so many people in ICU beds. That's critical. As well as, as the previous slide illustrated, it will increase the amount of deaths throughout the state of Colorado incrementally, phenomenally, by about 4,000. It's that simple. And so thus is the plea to simply wear a mask. It's the reason that we went into a stage red, which is required our restaurants to curtail indoor dining and our businesses to have a lesser amount of their square footage used for business. So, and that is...
You might mention that that's a state order, not a city order.
Right, right. And we are one of, 90% of the counties throughout the state of Colorado are in the same boat. And that mandate is not the city of Durango shutting down restaurants or closing businesses. That is the state of Colorado responding to the criteria, which is hospitalization rates, ability to serve our community medically, and increased case counts, and our ability to provide testing. The one success that we are having in our community is ability to provide testing. So I encourage everybody to get out and get tested, as you feel any symptomatic, any symptoms whatsoever. And certainly...
Dean, on that last slide, I don't know if everyone in the public could see it, but that's not statewide hospitalization utilization. That's La Plata County at 98.83%. I wanted to make certain you made that clear to the public.
It is, that's correct. We are experiencing, although the statewide is in a similar state, but we are at 98% capacity. And I mentioned earlier, 98% is really 100%. If you call Mercy right now, it very well could be full. From an ICU, you would not be able to be admitted to Mercy Hospital. Mike Murphy, CEO of Mercy Hospital, has stated that occasionally a bed opens up, so thus is the 98%. But functionally, they are full. And that doesn't account for the increase that we anticipate for the increase over Thanksgiving weekend and visitations, et cetera, that occurred during that period of time. This week will not be a better situation. It's not likely that those counts are going to go down, or the ICU beds will be any less than what was illustrated for last week. Thank you for that, Barbara. I appreciate it. It's a problem. For those of us that are wandering around the town going, it's not that big a problem. I had an email today that said, there's only been four deaths in La Plata County. What's the problem? Why are you killing my business? I think that one slide illustrates that we will kill three times as many people if we simply just ignore the mask ordinance, ignore the state mandates, and ignore social distancing. It's just that simple. And it's really critical that this occur during the next two weeks. The city, we just spent a few hours this afternoon talking about methods that the city can help. I might remind businesses that there is a program where we can, the city can offer as much as $15,000. Those increments, our applications are coming in quickly, faster than we anticipated. We're looking for additional resources as well, so that we can help those people in our business community survive the next couple of months. And hopefully, if we pull off this transmission containment, we will be able to look at the other side of this COVID. That'll buy time until we have vaccines available to reduce the amount of transmission. With that, I would like to mention also that we have some, today, the state legislature was meeting, and they are looking at a $37 million fund to help us help you, if that makes sense. That money would be coming directly to businesses as well as communities like ourselves, so that we can help the business community survive the next couple of months. So it might seem hopeless to a number of the businesses out there, that the restrictions are overly restrictive. We hope that we can help you through that, and as well as talk with the state about what is the real situation. Do we need to dial down restaurants as much as has been prescribed? There's been a lot of discussion, and we will continue those discussions, to help our restaurants in particular, continue to serve the public, serve our visiting tourist population, and survive this winter, I guess is the easiest way to say it. We get it. We understand. Our city government is trying to respond as quickly as possible. With that, I think that's probably enough on that topic. There's never enough. It's still with us. But I'd like to begin our public participation and invite Mitchell, if we have anybody in the wings that would like to talk to council this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do see someone who has raised their hand. I was going to mention that we do have a participant who called in on a phone. If you would like to participate during public participation, please press star nine is the correct way to do that. David, I'm going to invite you to speak. It is now your turn. David, please unmute yourself. Give us your first and last name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is David Moller. I live at 72 Tressal Lane. And I come to you tonight as the owner of Durango River Trippers and Adventure Tours. I know I've been in front of this council with a few different hats on in the past, but tonight, I'm speaking to you as a business owner. Wanted to give you a little bit of an update in my three minutes. Love the Herald article about the economic impact of tourism, and so I thought this might kind of tee up a little bit. So here goes. And some of this might come as a little bit of a repeat, so I'll talk fast as well as speak a little bit locally. So $788 billion is spent on the outdoor recreation community across the United States, which equals 229,000 jobs. Specifically in Colorado, that's $28 billion in spending, $9.7 billion in salaries and wages, $2 billion in local and state tax, and 12.8 of that billion is spent by out-of-state visitors. Also, according to one of the economics impacts that have been done, travel in La Plata County has increased from 151 million to 310 million from 2007 to 2017. So, you know, thinking about what that impact looks like and why, potentially, you know, kind of in response to a few of the councilors' comments about, you know, keeping the tourism lever at around 30% of our economy. You know, I get that. Having a diverse economy within a community is certainly important. But I would also kind of look in the mirror and say, what are we? Are we a hotbed for manufacturing? Do we have a lot of land that we can use up and get workforce in here? Probably not with the cost of land, thank you, and with about a 2.1 unemployment rate pre-COVID. So we are a tourist economy. In 2020, the numbers came in. We rafted 33,000 rafters down the Enamis River. The economic impact on that within the community, using a 2.56 economic indicator, is $11 million throughout the community. This is actually down only about 1,100 from 2019. So in spite of COVID, we actually only seen about 1,000 less rafters from last year, so that's actually really good. However, in 2005, we saw 55,000 rafters, which had an economic impact within our community of almost $20 million. To put this in comparison, some of our neighbors, Clear Creek, around that same time, had 11,000. Fast forward to today, Clear Creek is rafting 95,000 people down their section of river, with a county of population of only 10,000 people. They clearly see the investment that is right in our front yard, and that's the Enamis River, and our proximity to water. So I encourage the councilors to consider investing in tourism beyond a five-year threshold and keep it into perpetuity. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moller. Appreciate it so much. Appreciate that update. Mitchell?
If there is anybody else on the attendee list who wishes to speak to council during public participation, now is your chance. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else raise their hand.
Okay, Mitchell. Thanks so much. Did our phone caller, was anybody able to get in? Okay. All right. Well, I would encourage anybody that's still in the wings, if you have any comments related to an agendized item this evening, save your comments for that, and we will again have an opportunity to speak to any specific issue. Moving on, then, we will have a review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a list of items that are determined to be non-controversial or routine in nature. And so we bundle them, but we have ability to remove any of the items from the consent agenda. So first, we'll have a reading of the consent agenda, and then I'll ask council if there's any items that they would wish to be removed. So with that, maybe we have a reading of the consent agenda.
Items 6.1 through 6.3 are approval of minutes. 6.1 are minutes from the study session of November 10th, 2020. 6.2 are minutes from the special meeting of November 10th, 2020. 6.3 are minutes from the special study session of November 17th, 2020. Items 6.4 through 6.6 are discussion and possible action items. 6.4 concerns the approval of the policy for access to public records. 6.5 concerns approval of resolution R2020-43, accepting the state grants to library funding to be included in the 2021 budget. Item 6.6 concerns appointment of the finance director and human resource directors.
Thank you, Fay. And I'll ask councilors if there's any items you would like to remove from the consent agenda at this time.
Yes, Mayor, please. Can I remove item 6.6, please?
Excellent. I'm looking forward to hearing about that as well. And any other councilors? All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda not inclusive of item 6.6.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. And maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pratam Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Broke?
Yes, thank you so much. With that, we would have a discussion and possible action concerning appointment of the finance director and the human resource directors. So maybe we can have an update from our new city manager, Jose Madrigal.
Absolutely. Mayor and council, I am excited to go ahead to present Erin Hyder. She is from Durango, came from Mountain Capital Partners, has over 17 years of human resources experience to be our new human resources director. And then also Cynthia Snead, who has over 20 years of finance experience, and bringing her onboard to be the finance director for the city of Durango. And then also, while not on the agenda, but also wanted to introduce, while I had a chance, Tom Suisse, who is our new communications and media engagement manager. And proud to have all three onboard, and I think they'll make terrific additions to the team and really help us continue to move forward.
Thank you, Jose. And I was able to virtually meet them earlier yesterday, and very much look forward to, I think what you've done is assemble a really great team moving forward. And so we look forward to those changes and really capable hands that you've put us in.
Absolutely. And if they would like just to say hi, I think would be an appropriate time. So start, Erin, if you wouldn't mind, just introduce them and say hi.
Good thing. Thanks, Jose. Thank you for the warm welcome that I've experienced over here the last two days. I'm really excited to be joining the city of Durango staff, and I really look forward to this journey and this adventure. And so thank you again for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to it.
Cynthia?
Thank you, Jose. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I as well am very excited to be brought onboard. Two days in and getting up to speed with all of, I need to get up to speed with. Look forward to working with Jose to provide you with the financial information that you are looking for. After sitting through the budget session just before this, I'm seeing there's a lot of analysis to be done. So looking forward to getting that done.
Absolutely. And Tom?
Yeah, thanks. Hi, guys. I've met most of you, and it's fun to be on the other side for a while. So just like I used to pester you, now I actually am pestering Shannon right now about stuff that's going on. So I look forward to this, and I think it's going to be a lot of fun. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is great, wonderful welcome. And I love the turnabout is fair play thing, Tom, so go for it. Look forward to working with all of you.
Welcome, everyone.
I think the new, Tom's role is to be a liaison for all communications for the city of Durango. And so it's going to be able to, for us to get out in front of a number of issues, hopefully, and also to have, provide a unified voice to the media and to the general public. So very much looking forward to all three of you, and really critical for the future health of our community. So thanks, thanks so much.
Welcome, guys. Welcome.
Yeah, welcome, everybody. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve item 6.6 on the consent agenda.
Excellent, excellent. I was going to suggest that there'd be a little portrayal also of each of our new employees in the Herald, so we'd introduce them to the community that way as well. So, Tom, if we can put you on that, that'd be awesome. So it's been moved, and did I hear a second?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pratam Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Nosworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Broke?
Yes, thank you so much. With that, we have no, we'll move on to item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider the 2021 proposed budget and highway users' tax bond receipts. We'll start with, I believe, Jose, if I can ask you to kick that one off as well.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mayor and council. I am pleased to go ahead and begin the first public hearing for the 2021 proposed budget. We do have a presentation, and I will pass it on to Devin Schmidt, our budget and strategic planning manager. Have to get used to now the new title, but Devin, it's all yours.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. I am Devin Schmidt. I also need to get used to that as well. So I'm going to share my screen, and we will walk through a presentation for... So I'm gonna share my screen, and we will walk through a presentation for the public hearing on the 2021 proposed budget. So please bear with me one moment while I share my screen and get this into a slideshow format. Okay, so this is the public hearing to consider the city manager's proposed 2021 budget. The 2021 proposed operating budget is in the amount of $81,409,332. And the capital expenditures are, is in the amount of $29,155,654. After we conclude this presentation, it is the recommendation of the city manager and myself that city council by motion take public comment during the public hearing, and then direct staff to prepare the budget resolutions to be considered for approval for first reading at the December 8th special city council meeting. So there's no formal action on the budget at this time. We will be going through the combined 2021 budget, followed by the general fund, and then the internal service funds, enterprise funds, special revenues, capital projects, and highway user tax, and then we'll cover some next steps. So starting with the combined budget summary, this outlines our revenues, change in fund balance, operating expenditures, capital expenditures, and then total expenditures for each fund, as well as the projected ending fund balance. Should council direct staff to prepare the ordinance, staff will prepare one for operating and one for capital. The general fund is the largest fund used by the city and makes up approximately 56% of all proposed 2021 operating, which provides both direct and support services. This fund supports public safety, parks and recreation, streets, engineering, library, and community support services, as well as all administrative functions, including the city manager's office, human resources, city clerk, municipal court, finance, including information services, purchasing, and public television, and planning and community development. The balance of the operating fund is comprised of water, sewer, the water and sewer fund at 14%, internal service funds at 15%, transportation services fund at 5%, and airport and sustainable services comprised of 4%. The capital improvement proposed includes expenditures in the amount of $29,155,654. This includes projects within the 2005 fund, the 2015 sales tax fund, the 2019 sales tax fund, sewer, water, and airport. On an annual basis, the city sets aside its priorities and designate sources of funding for those projects. Because the program is reviewed annually in conjunction with the budget, it's very dynamic and flexible. This year, we have taken an effort to reappropriate projects that were previously appropriated, and we look forward to working with council on any new projects that come forth in 2021. I'll now cover the general fund. So the general fund revenues are primarily taxes and assessments, making up 65% of these revenues. These include items such as sales tax, use tax, property taxes, and other taxes. License and permits make up 2% of revenues. Intergovernmental revenues make up 7%, which include revenues from grants, followed by charges and services that make up 10%, which is primarily made up of charges for parks and rec services. And finally, we have miscellaneous at 16%, which includes interfund transfers from special revenues, such as the 2005, the 2015, and the 2019 sales tax, as well as the administration fees to offset the cost of internal services provided to enterprise funds. Moving on to the expenditures in the general fund, these cover services that I previously mentioned, such as city council, city management, city clerk, internal services such as finance, HR, information services, building and grounds, as well as services from parks and recreation, library, fire services, which are contracted through Durango Fire Protection District, the police department, and community support funding. Personnel services make up almost 59% of the general fund expenditures, charges and services at almost 37%, materials and supplies at 3%, and operating capital at 1%. The internal service funds in the city of Durango include the SURF fund, which is the capital equipment replacement fund, risk management, and self-insurance. Looking at the classification of these, we have 8% of personnel services, 3% materials and supplies, 65% charges and services, and primarily in risk management and self-insurance is where you'll see those charges and services to cover insurance and unemployment and things of that nature. The 24% that makes up operating capital is related to capital equipment for vehicles and equipment for the city of Durango fleet. In the enterprise funds, we have water, sewer, sustainable services, airport, and transportation funds. The enterprise funds are made up of fee-based services and provide services to residents such as water, sewer, trash, sustainability, recycling, the airport, and the transit bus services. Personnel services make up 38% of the total expenditures in the enterprise funds. Materials and supplies are at 7%, charges and services are at 51%, and operating capital is at 4%. Moving on to our special revenue funds, we have the 2005 sales tax, the 2015 sales tax fund, the 2019. We have the road impact fee fund, the Durango Tourism Fund, Conservation Trust Fund, Storm Drainage Fund, and the Park Development Fund. The 2005 debt services used to pay for debt related to the library and Florida Road, this is a quarter cent sales tax. The other quarter of the 2005 is used for the purposes of preservation and maintenance of natural lands, including but not limited to land to preserve water quality in rivers, streams and wildlife habitat, land for hiking and biking, and for the creation of maintenance of parks and trails. The 2015 half cent is used for the cost of construction operations or maintenance of recreation of facilities for parks, trails, pedestrian, and bicycle improvements, as well as maintenance facilities used by the Parks and Recreation Department and Urban Forests. The 2019 sales tax fund is the other half of this sales tax, and this fund is used for construction, operation, and maintenance of streets, alleys, curb and dutters, sidewalks, and related street improvements. With proposed expenditures being submitted, all of these have, go through the advisory boards prior to coming to city council for approval for projects. The road impact fee fund has expenditures that relate to offsetting the reduced revenues for the debt service related to Florida Road and the library. And the Durango Tourism Fund covers visit, the visit Durango contracts and provides additional revenues for transit and community special events, which is within the general fund under parks and recreation. For our capital projects, we have the general fund projects. We have the 2005, 2015, 2019 water and sewer and airport projects. In the general fund, we have $1.6 million in projects that range in scope from technology enhancements to doing different access control plans within community development. In the 2005 sales tax, we have projects listed in here that cover open space acquisition, park and rec trail improvements. We have Mason Center abastisabatement and demolition, Smart 160 Trail, and Durango Mesa Park. And that is at $2.5 million for the 2005 sales tax projects. In the 2015, we have projects that range in scope from rec center improvements to multimodal projects that focus on ADA improvements and traffic study designs. The amount of this fund for projects is $7.6 million. In water projects, the proposed amount of total projects is $6.5 million, almost 6.6, and those range in scope from doing waterline replacements to tank storage improvements and other areas to help improve the water infrastructure within the city of Durango. Sewer projects are at $4.3 million, and those range in scope from doing park redesigns to sewer projects and replacing lift stations. In the airport, we have $1.3 million, and these projects are somewhat unique in that they're primarily funded by the federal government with a state and then a small portion of local share for the airport projects. And finally, we have the highway user tax fund. State law requires that the budget hearing process also address the proposed use of the highway user tax funds distributed to local governments from the gasoline taxes imposed and collected by the state. These funds must be used for street purposes. The city spends substantially more on its streets than it receives from highway users' taxes, and in 2021, the distribution to the city from these taxes is approximately 472,000. In comparison, the 2021 proposed budget, we plan to spend $2.7 million for street-related purposes. This specific highway user tax has been allocated to snow removal in the 2021 proposed budget. The next steps would be to, we're here right now, having the first public budget hearing on December 8th. We will do the first reading for the appropriation ordinances, and then on December 15th, the budget will be adopted should council direct staff to prepare those. And that concludes my presentation. At this time, if it's appropriate, I could take any questions, or we could request to, should council direct for us to move to public participation.
I might ask for questions from council, initial questions, and then I will open it up for a public hearing as required by statute. Any council, any counselor questions at this point?
Devin, I didn't see the 2019 directed sales tax, CIP, so I think it may be missing from this presentation, and you'll want to add it to future ones. And then I'll just note that in the study session, I was able to raise my questions and also send them to council and Jose, so thank you.
Devin, is that, is that accurate that the, that one slide was missing, or is that part of the other two hearings we'll be having?
It doesn't look like that slide was missing, so my apologies on that. I can get that in, and we can get that reposted.
Thank you. I realize we're all working with multiple projects in real time. Thank you.
And, you know, one, just an initial comment is that these, these slides, this information is available or will be on durangogov.org. Is that a safe assessment? And as all budget items are in full transparency, so if there's no other comments, I will open it up for, open up the public portion of this hearing and ask Mitchell Carter if we have any, anybody in the wings that is either raising their hand or dialing in by phone using star nine.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do see someone has raised their hand. John, it is your turn to speak. Please give us your full name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is John Simpson. I live at 1831 Crestview Drive. I think this 2021 budget is shaping up very nicely. It's a great look and document, and I want to compliment Jose Madrigal, Melissa Youssef, Kim Baxter, and Barbara Nozworthy for reaching out to me and asking for my thoughts in this process. One of the biggest issues we've been working through is these interfund transfers, whether it be the 2019 or the water fund, that money getting transferred to the general fund. Most of these transfers go to the general fund. The charter states that only council may transfer money between funds, and it must be completed by a resolution. The interfund transfers are in this budget, but they should be brought out for a number of reasons I'll explain tonight. But most importantly, charter requires a resolution. It might be, might be worth considering a third resolution for interfund transfers. If you look at the table shown tonight, the combined 2021 budget, which is page five of 21 on the document I'm looking at, it's a great table overall. But one thing may have, that may help accurately track and manage operating expenditures is to remove all of the interfund transfers from the operating expenditures and make a new column titled interfund transfers. And there's many reasons to do this. First, those interfund transfers end up being counted twice, resulting in artificially high operating costs. For example, the 1.7 million transfer from the 2019 sales tax is just a transfer to the general fund where the expenses are actually paid for street maintenance. The same goes for the 2015 sales tax. It just goes to the general fund. It's not an operating expense. The employees are paid out of the general fund. There's your operating expense. Another way to look at this is if next year the 2019 sales tax transfer gets eliminated, which I hope it does, the general fund will still be paying all the same salaries, though for there'll be no change to the true operating expenditure, such as salaries and benefits, if that 2019 sales tax is removed. This will also help the enterprise funds. The transfers into the general fund seem to be completely out of line. The previously administration knew it was easy to raise fees in enterprise funds and then increase the transfer into the general fund. At the same time, the transfers from the general fund into the enterprise funds, in particular the water to maintain all the parks, is not shown, is likely woefully inadequate.
We have 30 seconds, John. Thank you.
Okay, this change will give this water, sewer, and transportation funds a bigger fund balance. Plus, we'll see why the airport isn't paying anything into the cities. Secondly, and most, and less importantly, I guess, on that table, the 2005 capital improvement fund, the capital expenditures of 2.4 million is just a debt service that is considered an operating expenditure and should be moved over into that column. All the other debts is an operating expenditure except that one. If you guys can get, if you can get the operating expenditures correct, this will help for years, and so you can track your expenditures over year to year. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. And with that, any other comments for this evening? Any other folks wishing to?
Mayor, I do not see anybody else raising their hands, but we do have a phone user. Remember, please use star nine if you'd like to raise your hand and call it in on the phone.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see anybody else.
All righty. With that, seeing that, I will close the, close the public hearing and offer any other comments from council, and, or any response to testimony provided this evening.
I would just like to say that I appreciate all the hard work that's been done by staff and the support for the finance department for everyone. I'm really looking forward to next year when we start out with a strategic plan to guide our budget and we work our way down, so it's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any other councilors?
Yeah, I also want to recognize the hard work and great improvement on this budget process this past year. I do want to address Mr. Simpson's note that the charter requires a resolution for interfund transfers and raise that with Jose, that that may be something we need to look at before the December 15th meeting. So if there's an appropriate way to address that now, I'd appreciate if you could look into it.
I will do.
And thank you again, not to duplicate, but thank you again to staff. We deserve credit. Lot of work done, great improvements.
Chris, you have any thoughts or comments, or I'll provide a final thought. And that is, I'd like to thank Devin for hanging in with us over this year, and as you can tell from her presentation, she's been living and breathing all the, not only the numbers, but the items that we are funding with, with this budget, and in order to be able to give us a presentation with as much thoroughness and description of the actual items to be funded. So I was, that's something we haven't seen before, is, you know, it's pretty much been a numerical presentation, and it's clear that she understands where the money is going in the finance department. Typically, that's the responsibility of each department head to actually implement the expenditure of expenditure of funds, but it's clear that she has a good understanding in our finance department of what these projects actually consist of and what, what they bring to our community. So thank you, Devin. And with that, I'd entertain a motion.
Do, do we need to make a motion on this?
I believe we are looking for a, take public comment and no formal action is required on this one. We'll take a motion on the next one. Sorry. Thank you, Kim.
That's okay. I just wasn't, I'm not even certain that we need them on any of these three. I thought we were going to do that on December 8th. Is that true, Devin?
Yeah, the 15th, I believe.
Okay, the 8th or the 15th, so not tonight.
Yeah, so yeah, no, this is just the first public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to our next hearing and I'll get back to, which is a public hearing to consider the 2021 annual appropriation ordinance, operating expenditures. So again, Jose, if you can start us out, that'd be great.
Definitely, Mayor and Council. This is the beginning of the annual appropriation ordinance that actually appropriates the funding. We did split it up into two different ones this year, one to be on the operating expenditures and the other to be on the capital expenditures. So these will be the two ordinances that you would consider to actually appropriate the money from the budget. And I will pass it to Devin if she has anything else to add or present.
But I don't really have anything else to add. For the first item, however, the total appropriation requested in the 2021 proposed operating budget would be 81,409,322. And so we would just need to be directed to prepare the appropriation ordinance and to either be introduced on December 8th or on December 15th.
Very good. And I do see the recommendation is the, the city manager that the city council by motion directs staff to prepare the appropriation, appropriation ordinance to be introduced December 8th at the special city council meeting. So you so moved, okay? It's that easy. I, I was trying to make sure that this did require formal action this evening. So it's been moved. Do I hear a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Nozworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes, I'm not seeing Counselor Bettin on. I wonder if he got dropped accidentally, so he might be in the waiting room or something.
He did get dropped. He said his internet, he's been texting, he's gone down and kind of been patchy. So I don't see him in the attendance. He just came back on.
Okay, once, we can circle.
Counselor Bettin?
Yes, I don't know what I'm voting on actually because I was totally absent, so I should probably abstain or something.
And Mayor Berkey?
Yes, and perhaps we could abstain. What we're voting on was the public hearing to consider the annual appropriation ordinance. So I don't know how much that you missed, if you're feeling comfortable.
Perhaps we have to create it for our next meeting.
Yep.
I can comfortably vote yes. I heard the entire presentation. Apologize, my internet seems to be having some issues.
We're glad to have you virtually back. So with that, I think I'm the last vote and I don't know if you collected my vote.
Mayor Berkey?
Thank you so much. And that's a be affirmative. Thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to the next item, 9.1.3, a public hearing to consider the 2021 annual appropriation ordinance for capital expenditures. Slightly different with the same team. So Jose, can I ask you to tee this one up as well?
Same thing, except this is on the capital side from the operating side and I'll pass it to Devin to give the total on the amount that the ordinance will appropriate.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. So the total appropriation requested in the 2021 proposed capital budget is 29,155,654. And it's the recommendation of city manager and myself at city council by motion, direct staff to prepare the appropriation ordinance to be introduced either at the December 8th special city council meeting or December 15th.
I would so move again.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Nozworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bettin?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Berkey?
Yes, thank you so much. Moving forward, 9.2, we have no quasi judicial hearings this evening, nor do we have any city attorney items under agenda item 10. So we do have an introduction of ordinance under 11.1, which is an ordinance for the purposes of amending the zoning of real property located within the city of Durango, Colorado pursuant to chapter 27, sections 6-3-2-3 and 2-1-2-6 of the code of ordinances the city of Durango. And with that, I will ask Dirk Nelson to help us out with the introduction of this ordinance.
This, yes, Mayor. This is ordinance number 202018. This is a ordinance that's being returned to council at the motion of council regarding the rezonal property located on the bench above the, the mobile home parks awaiting me at the moment, but above the.
Island code.
Code.
Exactly, island code, thank you. And so this again is for the purposes of rezoning that property per the prior approval of council.
Excellent. Any, any discussion with council or, the presentation on this was last two weeks ago and the ordinance has been prepared. Any further discussion? If none, then I would entertain a motion to approve this ordinance, 2020-18.
I would move that we approve ordinance 2020-18 for the purpose of amending the zoning of real property within the city of Durango.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's have a roll call.
Counselor Bettin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Nozworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Berkey?
Yes, thank you so much. We'll move on to agenda item number 12, which is administrative items, 12.1, which is a discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the state board of the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund for the for the Resilient Communities Program. So I understand we have a presentation by our Parks and Recreation Director Kathy Metz.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Berkey and members of the city council. The Great Outdoors Colorado Board awarded the city of Durango a grant in the amount of $140,605 for the Resilient Communities Program. The purpose of the grant is it advances outdoor recreation stewardship and land protection work. This special grant cycle is a one-time immediate opportunity that has emerged in direct response to the COVID pandemic, all within the context of the GOCO five program values, which we certainly aspire to. The grant, if awarded by the, accepted by the city of Durango council, would fund two seasonal City of Durango Open Space Rangers and two Durango Trails seasonal crew leaders to assist with land management, wayfinding signage and stewardship efforts. And this would occur in 2021. The total project cost for this grant is 180,843 and the city of Durango cash match is 18,600 with an in-kind match with using staff salaries of 15,238. And there's also a cash match from Durango Trails in the amount of $6,400. Certainly would like to answer any questions of the council if they have any, but the purpose of the, this evening is to just see if the council is willing to accept this grant award. And if so, we would come back to the city council at the next regularly scheduled meeting to appropriate the grant funds on December 15th.
Kathy, I think this is really exciting for a couple of reasons. I know we have a lot more people out on our trails and I know that we've been slightly challenged by getting trail signs out to direct people so that if they have emergencies and things, they can call in and let people know where they are or they can guide people where to go. So I think this is exciting. I like that and look forward to the wayfinding signage improvement.
I would, I would second that. And not only that, it's, it's job creation and for positions that we didn't find it necessary to fund any new positions previously, but with a grant like this, it allows that to happen. And, and, you know, I think it is better stewardship and adds resilience to our community. So, and a very small match for a significant funding amount. So I really, really think this is great leveraging and congratulations. Any other counselors want to weigh in on this? I understand it's a resolution is, is, it gets approved in the form of a resolution. Point of order is, are we intending to pass this resolution this evening or take comment and pass it in a week, in two weeks?
If the council is so interested in doing so, you certainly could take formal action on the acceptance of the grant award by the resolution this evening. And then at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, you would actually appropriate the grant funds so they could be expended in 2021.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. And if there's no other comments, I would entertain a motion to accept that resolution. It would probably be 2020-19 if I have these things in order, Dirk.
Those are the ordinance numbers, Mr. Mayor. So it would be number 44, it'd be R44.
Okay, resolution R44. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution R44.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bettin?
Yes.
Counselor Nozworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Berkey?
Yes, thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to, Counselor Youssef, yes.
Thank you for letting me interrupt. I've received a comment from a resident, Ms. Sweetie Marbury, who was, wanted to do some public participation on our water fund, noting it was a public hearing. Can, can we let her speak now? I'm not sure. She's on the phone. She's, she's on as an attendee.
We open that public hearing and close that public hearing.
Right, for some, I don't, was, did, did we open it? I'm, I'm feeling that she was thinking that we didn't actually open it and give public an opportunity. I know we should have and we meant to. I'm feeling that maybe we didn't. So I'm sorry, I don't really know how to handle this, but I just wanted to say that.
It was part of the full presentation that Devin gave, so it was all part of that full, perhaps written comment, coming in and I looked to the mayor, but it was part of the open discussion. I'm, I'm open to hearing anything now too.
Yeah, certainly. The alternative is to simply provide written commentary to, to, to council and staff and we name part of the public record. It's a little uncustomary to reopen a public hearing after we have closed it. So as much as I would like to have as much public testimony as possible, it's not customary to reopen a public hearing after we've closed it, so.
I'll encourage, I'll encourage an email to council and, and public participation at our next meeting if, if she so desires.
That, and that is exactly correct and we will have another opportunity to provide commentary and join in, but I would be remiss to set a precedent to have additional public comment after we close the public hearing. So thank you for that. And for Ms. Marbury, hopefully that we will hear from you soon and, and I'm sure we will. And we should accept public commentary, written public comment for the record as well. So with that, we move on to, and thank you for interrupting. It was great. With that, we'd like to talk about council reports and actions. So I might just go around, round and ask Counselor, or Mayor Protem Baxter if she has any, anything to talk about this evening, to present.
Thank you, Dean. One of the things I had a question about for council, and I don't know that we would be discussing it tonight, but I think that, and we saw, we're seeing this with some of the emails and texts that are coming through tonight already, that I think the demands on our police department around state orders versus city orders versus confusion versus everything you can imagine about the COVID issues and being in a red level versus being in a different level. I think we're going to be putting a lot more demands on our police force. I have the feeling that when mask infractions occur, they'll be getting phone calls and wanting people to, wanting the police to respond to those phone calls, like immediately, expecting them to be there. And if we have some other issues with the state orders, I think the police are going to have to respond to those. And additionally, as we've discussed, we've had a rise in crime rate since COVID started and I would hope that that would be our priority for responses is to take care of crime and to make safety a priority, but council hasn't discussed this and I don't know if Jose or Chief Bramer have taken any steps in prioritizing these things themselves or should council be discussing this and giving some direction? I'm not certain how we want to handle that.
I can, if it's okay with the council, have chief answer some of those questions. We did talk about some of these things as we were going through how priorities would be and understand that you sent your email earlier this week that it might be coming up during this item. We were prepared to have any discussion or kind of where we are today, if the council sees that as something they would like to have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. I might just start with the fact that the mask ordinance is, was adopted by the city of Durango, city council. The rollback or restrictions placed on restaurants for capacity and that kind of thing are, is a state public health order and therefore is not our jurisdiction to fully enforce. Clearly, the community is confused as they, or rightfully so, not, not being in, in the formation of all these ordinances, that clearly the, the restaurants are controlled by the state and the local health department. And the only thing that the city has imposed at this point in time is the mandatory mask ordinance and that's it. And with that, I'd like to, like to hear what you and the chief of prior teams. Thanks.
Thank you. Chief?
Absolutely. Thank you, city manager. Thank you, Mayor and council. So, yeah, we looked at our statistics today since, since the level changed to red. We've also looked at the data coming in in relations to any complaints that we're getting calls about mask compliance. And thus far, it's not been overburdening. You know, our process was set since early March of how we handle public health order violations in conjunction with San Juan Basin Health, with our partners with the county. And today, we had a very productive enforcement group meeting to set some clear direction as well on how we're in a partnership with the investigative team, with the sheriff's department, through the county attorney, through the district attorney, in conjunction with San Juan Basin Health as well. So there is a clear delineation and I appreciate council clarifying that for the public, that there are two separate issues, that we only have the authority to, to work under the municipal ordinances for the mask ordinance. And as of right now, we have responded to several of those type of calls. We're still working on a continued education strategy as our first priority and I think it's going to be pretty successful. To this point, a majority of people are being compliant. We're getting a few spot issues around town. You know, there's two, two businesses that are significantly violating some of these issues. One is being dealt with currently through the process we formulated. The other one, we have a plan and we're going to monitor it. And if it becomes a problem and if it's a larger issue, then we'll use our resources that we have available to deal with that. Other than that, it's all been single incidents of one or two people walking in to stores and those are, seem to be, have been dealt with by the management at each one of those facilities as well. So that's going to be another part of our strategy is to educate with the team to go out and talk to the major businesses in any area that we see that is flagging itself of concern. So right now, we have a good handle on it. I can certainly reevaluate this and I continue, will monitor this and as council wants to report. reports, just let me know, and I can provide those as need be, and we can, we can start looking at it. Good news was, as the November numbers came back, the preliminary numbers, I'll share that report with council here coming up. The property crimes have seemed to have slowed down a little bit. We're actually back down to a normal status, but our, some of our violent crimes has increased a little bit over the last five-year average, but that's also a national trend as we're seeing as well. So we're working on some strategies, some are working, we're modifying it, we keep an eye on it, and any additional information the council would like, I can certainly present that at any given time.
Thank you, Chief Brammer. I'm glad to hear the, not about the violent crime, but the other things, I'm glad to hear that those are down, and also that our mask ordinance at this point isn't putting too big a strain on your resources, but I would request that if you and City Manager see that changing and trending in a negative manner, that if we can support you by helping with the prioritization, you let us know.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. That means a world to us. Thank you very much for that support.
Chief, thank you so much. Very, very good, good report and good response, and thank you for helping our community through this as well.
Absolutely, Mayor.
It's a tough spot you're in, as we all are, but you particularly, so, thanks.
At this point, I'll be happy to have someone else present ideas or thoughts or actions.
Okay, how about former Mayor Yusuf?
Hi there, thank you, Mayor. I had sent, I just wanted to follow up on the email that I sent earlier this week, which was that at some point in the new year, or whenever staff, whenever we're able to get to it, I would love to have a review of our bump out for business program and to take a look at the success of that program, what worked, what didn't work, and if we want to continue it, even vaccine or not, through next year, and what that might look like, and how we might be able to facilitate some of that, and potential improvements to that program if we decide to go forward. So I just kind of wanted to bring it up, not to discuss tonight, to just reiterate my desire to have that discussion with council at some point in the new year, if there's council support.
Thank you, Counselor Yusuf, and I'm reminded that if we don't have any snow, then maybe we can implement this reopening of bump outs at an earlier time, so should we be hit with COVID and no snow, that certainly respond.
And then one more quick update that I'm looking for, an update on at some point with council, and from our Parks and Recreation Department, which is an update on the Class One e-bike trial at Twin Buttes, and a review of the evaluate, you know, evaluation of the metrics that they were using to evaluate that program. We received quite a few emails in support of that trial, so I would love to, when appropriate, as well, potentially in the new year, follow up on that, too.
Absolutely, for the public as well as, as edification of ourselves. I think that's important. Great topic, and again, with no snow, we're looking for things to do, so, thank you. Moving on, perhaps Counselor Bateen, do you have any reports and actions that you'd like to bring forth this evening? You're on mute, Chris.
Sorry. I wanted to apologize to all of council and staff for my absence at our last meeting. I had a family health crisis first, and then, you know, we had our special meeting, and I was on the phone out in the middle of nowhere trying to tune into that and getting disconnected. I'm sure that was irritating and annoying it was for me, so sorry I put you all through that during some times that were difficult decision that we had to make. And then also just wanted to announce to the public, those that weren't in attendance in our study session, we did have a pretty significant discussion, asking the city staff to look into avenues to provide assistance to our restaurant community, local business community relative to the impacts of the restrictions that are disproportionate to them and their businesses at this time, and hope to have further information to report back as well as hopefully opening up channels between those business owners and the Health Department and other government authorities to talk about other resolutions relative to those issues, so more to come on that.
Thank, thank you, Chris, and I hope your dad's better, and yeah, we're anxious to have you back as well, so thanks. With that, Counselor Noeswory, Barbara?
Sure, I have a couple of, thank you, I have a couple of meetings that I participated in, the Multimodal Advisory Board as the liaison to that board. We looked at lengthy discussions on crossing of North Main around 30th Street or so, we're still looking at that with, in conjunction with CDOT. Animus View Drive, reducing the speed limit to 25. I think people are very much looking forward to that discussion next week, and council, whatever decision the council may make with regard to that. And an update from CDOT on some of the efforts with Medians and with Camino Del Rio, and issues with that, that'll be under construction this summer, so that was quite productive and very much interaction from the board. We also met with the Alliance Board a couple of times, both the board meeting and with the investors, and they, we've gone through an iteration of the strategic plan, it's not quite ready to be distributed in draft format, but close. We'll be looking at getting feedback from the participants and our key investors for that, and hopefully bringing that fully around in the beginning of the new year. I also wanted to remind everyone that the Community Relations Commission meets tomorrow at 4 o'clock, and we always welcome input from the community. There has been quite a bit of request for translation services for that commission, so I sent a note out to council and City Manager, but I do want to comment that there's been a request that we have translation services on a regular basis for that one. And finally, I'd just like to make a pitch for Share the Love Durango. It's online shopping, you can help spread some community support around to our local businesses, both restaurants, bookstores, clothing stores, you name it, it's all on the website, and that's Share the Love Durango.
Counselor Noeswory, if I may just add, if you, on that budget presentation, we did add $7,500 for translation services, so it will be in for 2021, and hoping to make sure that, just not the CRC, but all of our meetings, we can get out to as many different, diverse groups as we possibly can.
Appreciate it very much. I'm just making a pitch for the, the group that I am a liaison for, so thank you.
So Barbara, you reminded me, as I said earlier, this has been a really busy day, but one of the really fun things I did was a live video for Local First, highlighting one of our local stores, that all of us as city councilors, and I'm sure other members of the community have been asked if they want to participate in, and it was great fun. It was the Zero Waste pop-up in the Smiley Building, and it was, I've never done anything like this before, so it was kind of nerve-wracking, but it was so much fun, and the gifts and zero waste products that they have there are phenomenal, and I look forward to doing more of these and getting our businesses as much support as we can from the community.
Thank you, and I'll be doing some as well. I think the other councilors have probably been asked to participate as well.
Excellent, excellent, thanks. And with that, yeah, I used too much time, the citizens' time earlier, and my major plea for social distancing and mask wearing, and I'm reminded that is, oftentimes, this is politicized, it's, and it's really not a political or partisan issue, it's really just physics, and I'm reminded of that was what we learned in elementary school, that for every action, there's an opposite and equal reaction. So, and city government is trying to do the calculus and that magical task of trying to arrive at that midpoint, that infinity, that is the sweet spot, and so, but, and so we're trying to do that by supporting our business community in every possible way we can, monetarily, and relief mechanisms and so forth that we've talked about earlier tonight, that we will be implementing in the coming weeks. So we're trying to do our part, and all I can do as mayor is request that the public and our businesses do your part, and the calculus on that is wear a mask and social distance, and there will be less deaths. And more importantly than deaths, I mean, that sounds pretty morbid, it is. It's, my, my partner in Denver is a physician that's making the decisions of who gets a ventilator. That's actually occurring in the state of Colorado at this time, making those difficult decisions and having to tell the families that don't get selected for a ventilator that their, their loved one is probably going to die. That's never an easy decision, and I don't want that to be a decision that anybody at Mercy Hospital has to make in our community. So it's that simple, equal and opposite reaction. Similarly, I hope that the, every ordinance that comes down from the state of Colorado doesn't be met with a similar pushback, that simply we can figure out a way to, to survive. It's particularly important during the next two to three weeks, and in our community, and as we all know, we're looking forward to vaccines to, to ease on out of the, of this spike of pandemic in the, coming in the spring, but it's too far away. We need to behave ourselves and act accordingly in the interim. So with that, please, please, we hope to launch a campaign for Durango Cares and talk about and support our businesses in, in, in supporting the public health orders to the greatest extent possible. We will also be trying to help our restaurants particularly in the near future to, to work their way through this crisis time. So with that, that's, I'll quit talking, and any other final thoughts from council? If not, we'll move on to our next item, which is executive sessions. We have two proposed executive sessions this evening. 14.1 is discussion, possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter regarding the annual evaluation of the city attorney as permitted in CRS 24-6-4024FI. With that, do I have a motion to convene an executive session?
I have a question. Have all evaluations been submitted?
I don't believe so, because I am the culprit in that, on that front, and so.
But I just suggest that we wait, rather than, than going ahead without all evaluations, that we wait till we get that, recognizing we need to do this yet in the month of December, and go forward once we have all five evaluations.
Thank you, Barbara, for recognizing that, and I appreciate that tolerance, and if, if that's the consensus, that we would rather defer these executive sessions for another evening, we can certainly do that. In which case, do I have a motion to defer the, these actions, these executive sessions to another date specific, perhaps two weeks from today?
Motion to defer them or not, that would be up to Dirk, probably to advise us, but we can just by not motion, they can just die on the floor.
Okay, understood. I just, I wasn't sure if we wanted to establish another date, and I was, I was fully anticipating moving ahead with this, Kim, but I appreciate your tolerance and.
Dean, could I suggest that we commit to meeting, we have a special session next week Tuesday, and that we commit to trying to have an executive session tied to next week Tuesday's meeting, so that we can proceed with the evaluation with the mayor and the Protem, giving the evaluation to our appointees. So next week Tuesday, we meet as a council to come with one voice of our evaluations.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm hesitating, just not looking at next week's schedule. I'm totally agreeable to the concept if it fits the schedule before or after our study session.
We have a special study session at 3:00 PM on the 8th, is that true? And then our regular study session at 4:00 PM, and if we, if we decide to do this, I would need a commitment from you, Dean, because I need to do the legwork to make this work, so.
Understood. Yeah, if that works for everybody else's schedule, it sounds like it could be a tag on to, to that, to that meeting, to that regular, right after, say we go from 4 till 6, or we have a 3:30 to?
I think we have a 3 o'clock and a 4 to 6.
Okay, so this would be at 6 o'clock.
Well, you would need to do it in a special meeting. The 3 o'clock is a special meeting to adopt the ordinance, the first reading of the two ordinances and the resolution for the mill levy. So you could, you could open a special meeting at 3 and do those items, do your study session, and then open another special meeting at 6 to do the executive sessions, but the executive sessions have to be done as part of a regular meeting, not a study session.
Well, and it'd be easier than to tag it on to the special meeting at, after, between 3 and 4, or defer entering our study session till perhaps 4:30 or something like that in order to fit two executive sessions in between, so we don't have to create another special meeting at the end.
Well, it's, I don't know why that's any different, it just is an additional meeting.
Right, right. It's just opening another meeting and just another.
My point was, it had to be done as a special meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely. I was just trying to make it part of the one meeting as opposed to opening another meeting.
Well, I'm concerned, the reason why I'm concerned about that, Dean, is because if we want to have some discussion, you know, we're doing two reviews, I mean, in the sense of looking them over to create one voice, it might be, it might be longer than half an hour.
Surely.
Discussion, and I, I don't want to, I want to give, you know, full credit to our appointees and really have robust discussions and not rush it, so.
Awesome, okay. With that, yeah, let's, let's look at following our study session, and maybe our study session will be, we can shorten that to some degree, so if we're lucky.
Yeah, I don't know what's on the agenda yet, so.
Yeah, this is, well, if that's agreeable to everybody, then we can simply not act on item 14.1 and 14.2 this evening, and I appreciate everybody's tolerance on that front.
Could I get a commitment from you, Dean, to have that information to me by Thursday at noon on the 3rd?
I, I, I can say yes, I got to look at my calendar for tomorrow, and in order to get that done by Thursday at noon, so I will, I'll have to get back to you on that, but that would be, that would be great.
Okay, please call me as soon as you can.
Yeah, yeah, I, no problem, thank you. With that, that brings us to the end of our meeting today, the regularly scheduled City Council meeting of December 1st, 2020, and I will end this meeting.